Hearings Item 10A. Fourth Public Hearing Regarding Redistricting Ward Boundaries will be heard at 5:30 PM pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 21628C. We have provided a staff memorandum transmitting correspondence received and additional maps.
Mr. Clegg. Well, actually, let me just do a little preface. With this public hearing, speakers will be allowed 30 minutes. There's a clock on the TV screen behind me which indicates 30 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 28 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 29 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk and she'll provide copies to the council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have a very brief presentation prior to receiving public testimony on this topic to just provide an overview of the maps that have been received and revised in this last week. And Brianna Carrier, Assistant to the City Manager, will walk through that quickly for us.
Great. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. We'll get right into it. Tonight, what we are looking at are, again, what Christian just mentioned, the edited maps since our last public hearing last week. We do still have all draft maps online on the city's redistricting website. What you have in your packets tonight are what edits were requested from council members from our last public hearing, as well as two additional public submissions. And we should have one map author here tonight to speak on the public submission 4A. So when public statement starts, they will have the opportunity to speak in more detail on that one. So again, things we're going to cover tonight, the revised draft maps that you have in front of you, the new public map submissions. We'll have time for public testimony, of course. And we're really looking for council direction because as you'll see in our next slide, our timeline for the remainder of the process, these two yellow highlighted areas are essentially where we are right now. So this is the fourth public hearing. With the timeline that we have, you would have to take your first vote on final draft maps on March 16th. Those maps need to be made public seven days in advance, so truly no more edits can be made after March 9th, which is next week. So we have a very quick turnaround here, and that is the timeline that we are currently on.
Ms. Carrier?
Yes.
We don't have copies of the map. Would you be able to provide copies, please?
You?
The Vice Mayor? Oh, the Vice Mayor would like a copy.
Vice Mayor, I believe you should have a copy of all of the atlases in your blue memo. All right, no problem. You can have mine.
Go ahead.
Yes, always have extras. So we are all set, and we're going to just quickly go into a summary of the maps that we have, essentially that we are looking at at this point in the process. So of the maps that we have asked of our consultant redistricting partners, these two maps follow the baseline map from draft map A. So we have two edited maps that have come from draft map A based on council feedback last week. These maps still unify the northwest part of the city. They keep the development in the southwest part of the city together as well, taking into consideration communities of interest in downtown, and both have three Latino citizen voting age population wards. So those are the two maps provided by our consultant that are from the first initial set that our consultant made. And the following, the maps beyond this, are the publicly submitted maps. A quick summary of those maps. We have here what we're calling public submission 2B. So this is the update from last week's submission 2A. This map includes delineation between wards four and five at the river in the south or in the west, western part of town, also takes into consideration downtown community of interest, has two Latino citizen voting age populations, minority-majority wards as well. For public submission number four, this one was submitted yesterday, and another update, the presentation should actually be 4A because we do have an updated version of that included in the presentation tonight. This was submitted by a student. His name is Angel Ruiz. He's out of CSUB's GIS program. And his map, he's entitled New Bakersfield. It has three Latino voting age population wards as well, and he may or may not be here tonight. I wasn't able to meet with him before, and great. And so he'll have some time to provide some more detail on his thinking and development for his map. Public submission five, entitled The Unity Map, was submitted by the Jakarta Movement. It also has three citizen voting age population maps as well, wards. Just to take a quick summary look of the five maps that we have edited from last week. Plan A2, your deviation there is 9%. Again, we would want to stay within a legal deviation below 10%. And I'll pause, Madam Mayor. Do we have a question? No, great. So we have Plan A2, total deviation 9%. You can also see listed in the final column there which wards have an over 50% Latino voting age population. For Plan A3, a deviation of 9.7%. Plan 2B, a deviation of 6.7%. 4A, 4.5%. And then Plan 5, the Unity Map, 4.5% as well. And just something of interest to note, too, the other columns just show you where your lowest and highest populations are for each of those wards. That's what helps us determine our deviation. All of these maps are underneath the 10% deviation legal limit. So we'll get a look at what those maps look like now. This is the existing city wards. And scrolling through slowly, we have Plan A2, A3, A, submission 2B, submission 4A, and then finally, submission 5, which is the Unity Map. And we will have these, you guys have these in your packets as well, and we can scroll back if you wanted to see any detail. We can go into that. But what I wanted to provide for this hearing today was a very high-level overview of the edits that we've received so far, a summary of the deviation in some of the minority-majority districts that were created between last week and this week, and asking for a bit of direction from council as we move along on our timeline. So council should identify a plan or plans to move forward to the next meeting with specific changes, if any, clearly identified. The final plan selection hearing will consider only draft plans that have been made public for seven days. Again, that would be March 9th, next Wednesday, if we're on the first reading and second reading to take place March 16th and April 6th. So I just wanted to end my summary presentation here again with that timeline, looking for direction for staff or our consultant for any possible edits before next week because after next Wednesday, we'll have the maps made public. The following week at City Council would be your first vote to change the city's ordinance to adopt new ward boundaries, and then from there, second vote taking place on April 6th. I did add one last line there at the end that the legal deadline for the city to adopt our maps is actually April 17th. The reason that we are doing the first and second readings on the 16th is the 6th is that's just how the council calendar played out this year. So with that, again, all of this information is on the city's website, so if anybody on the council or in the audience wants to see the detailed atlases and demographics, you can see them. They are under the city clerk's webpage. And that is the conclusion of my presentation for tonight. Hold for, if there's any additional comments from our city manager, city attorney.
Thank you, Ms. Carrier. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, how many people wish to speak on this topic?
We have received 14 speaker cards, two of which are from individuals that submitted or organizations that submitted draft maps.
Thank you very much. While there's a two-minute limit per speaker for a total of 30 minutes, we'd like to give this very important topic consideration and give those people an opportunity, those who have submitted cards already, an opportunity to speak. So groups that will be presenting a draft map have five minutes to speak on your presentation, and then individual speakers will have two minutes to speak. So first, I'm going to call on the public submission maps, and I believe we have the New Bakersfield map 4A. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Angel. As stated before, I'm a GIS student at California State University, Bakersfield. My map, is there any possible way we can pull it up? No? Anyway, so when it comes to my map, I was able to draw a map that the population equality is 4%, which is 6% a lot less than what the law requires you to have. The law requires you to have 10% deviation. I was here to bring my map to 4%. When it comes to legal compliance, that's voting age population. I was able to draw three effective districts above 50%. I mean, wards, sorry. So Ward 1 would be 59.6%, Ward 2 would be 53.7%, and Ward 7 would be 50.3%, right? When it comes to continuity, all seven wards are geographically contiguous, as you can see on the screen. Community integrity, that would be ensuring that communities of interest stay together. For that, all communities of interest remain in their respective zones or wards, and their communities have not been split apart. So that's something that's, you know, very important, something that's important to me. I don't want to split any communities from any part that represents Bakersfield. For city integrity, my map keeps downtown whole, and the Lakeview also kept whole. For identical boundaries, the current word, the, no. For identical boundaries, the current words are represented as using identical boundaries such as the Kern River as a boundary between Ward 4 and 5. When it comes to compactness, Ward 3 and 1, they're the least geographically compact, as you can see up on the screen. And lastly, when I drew the map, I did it, you know, without having any discrimination against political party. The map was drawn based on communities of interest. It was drawn based on what I felt was best for the community, for the city of Bakersfield, for people that live here. Also, I drew the map based on Punjabi population. I drew the map based on Latino population, and I drew the map based on our brothers and sisters that are African-American. That's the main reason why I drew the map. This map is complying within the law, Voting Rights Act, Fair Maps Act, so there's nothing for you to worry about any of those aspects of it. The map, I, to be honest, I think that this is the best map that has been submitted. It makes sense, it's easy, it's understandable, and you can see the boundaries quite well. When it comes to our protected classes, I would definitely say that, you know, our Asian population in Ward 5 and Ward 7, which is 14.9%, and in Ward 7, it's 13%, they are protected. That's something that I, like I mentioned earlier, I took into extreme consideration when I was drawing this map. Do you have any questions for me?
We'll address that later, so thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks so much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. And then we have one more group who wishes to present revision, and so that would be the Jakarta Movement. Ms. Carr? Okay. Sure. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the next speaker? So speakers now, individual speakers will have two minutes.
Nick Hill.
Mr. Hill?
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members. My name is Nick Hill, representing the Kern County Black Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to submit to you, we'd like to keep southeast Bakersfield, Benton, Martin Luther King to Panama and similar communities. These are the major community, major black communities in Bakersfield, and they are low to moderate income families concentrated in these areas. As a result of these small populations of black people here in this area, it is important that these communities are not split between multiple districts so that they may have a voice in the electoral process. There are shared interests in the development of city infrastructure, investment in additional community amenities such as schools and small business in the community. This configuration also keeps AAPI, which is Asian-Americans, Pacific Islands, and Latinx COIs, communities of interest in east Bakersfield as well, southeast Bakersfield, and portions of southwest Bakersfield together. This district is also drawn with a majority of Latino citizen voting age population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. And now Jakarta Movement, are you ready? And I'll ask all those who are standing to please sit down for safety reasons.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Harveen Gaur, and I'm the Kern County Community Organizer and Bakersfield City Organizer for Jakarta Movement. It's a pleasure to see you all here again today. I'm here today to advocate for our newly updated map. It's the Unity Map submitted by Jakarta Movement. We listened to comments from the council members as well as community members to reflect the needs of the community. While we know no map is perfect, we do know that if we put communities first, we can come to a better solution. Reflected in the name, I would like to emphasize the importance of unity, the power of the collective. We, when we as a community can come together as a whole, we can build a better Bakersfield for the future generations to come. I know you all, our beloved council members, want the same. Keeping this in mind, I would like to present to you a map that we feel would best represent and reflect our community. So while creating this map, we use the best practices by taking community input into consideration. We listened to many folks and took special care to listen to the Punjabi community who have sometimes felt unseen and want to keep their communities whole. We kept best mapping practices in mind, spoke to additional folks, and tried to best capture community needs while keeping compacted community and population balance in mind. Not only does our map look nice, it's easy to digest. The district boundaries we have drawn are in compliance with the Fair Maps Act, as well as follows easily recognizable geographical factors like major roads, the Kern River, the 99, 58, 24th Street, et cetera. For example, District 4 is bound by Kern River, a boundary we all agreed at the prior meeting is very needed. In District 5, we have a significant, where we have a significant Punjabi and Asian population, we have the easily recognizable and busy streets of Gosford, Ash, as our boundaries, including those new housing developments which create opportunity for growth and economic enrichment for the larger Bakersfield community. Furthermore, if we take a look at District 7, we see it falls right beneath District Boulevard and also includes the auto mall as its natural extension as a remainder of the district and serves as a great area for economic prosperity for its residents. In addition to all the amazing benefits of this map, we have created three Latino VRAs as the law suggests, kept the Punjabi community together, and the historical African-American populations united in District 1 in southeast Bakersfield. We've also kept the communities of interest together in D4 by creating space between east side residents with the river and oil fields. In D2, we are able to successfully maintain the VRA status following the Niles and Monterey Streets, all while taking into consideration the different populations that reside in the areas such as residential and commercial areas, all while taking into consideration the demographics and socioeconomics of these populations. Our socioeconomic status, pardon me. While, of course, I hope the Unity Map is to be selected, I want to thank the city of Bakersfield for encouraging the public to get involved. For this purpose, I strongly urge you all to consider the publicly submitted maps except map 2B. These are the voices in the community, and to support civic engagement, we must give the public's voice key precedent. Finally, we know that there are no maps that are perfect. If there are minor revisions, a street here, auto park there, we're willing to work together to come to the best solution that fits us all. As briefly mentioned before, I do want to express explicit concern about public submission map 2B. This map disadvantages the Punjabi community extremely and has raised concerns over the last 24 hours when it became available to the public. The lack of straight lines and jagged looks seem gerrymandering rather than serving the constituents. So if there are any questions at all, please feel free to reach out to me and my colleagues. I can be contacted via harveen@jakarta.org. Brianna also has our other important contacts, as well as my colleagues' contacts. Again, thank you for your time and consideration. I hope you all will prioritize the needs of our communities by adopting fair maps and taking our beloved citizens, community members, and voters as well into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Ashley De La Rosa.
And just as a reminder, the remaining speakers will have up to two minutes, please. And would you also call the next one, just so they can be prepared, please?
Eliana Honeycutt.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, council members and mayor Go. I will be reading a letter on behalf of Linda Fidler. While working for the state senate in 2011, I was assigned to monitor the county's redistricting process. It was an eye-opening experience. Hours of explanation, maps, and data were presented by city council, by county council and senior administrative analyst. Community members weighed in passionately with their suggestions for equitable maps. They wanted county government to look a little more like the people they represent. It appeared that it was on a logical, rational path until it was time for supervisors to select and approve a map. I learned that what cracking, stacking, and packing meant in mapping and the two provisions of the Voting Rights Act, Section 2, Section 5 prohibits redistricting that dilutes minority voting strength. Kern County had one protected Latino seat at the time, but it did not take long to do the math on my yellow legal pad and realize that based on the population numbers, there should be two protected Latino seats on the Board of Supervisors. When the senior analyst asked if there were any questions, I raised my hand and asked, since the Latino population is right around 50%, shouldn't there be two protected Latino districts? His response, you're wrong, Linda, it's not 50%, it's 49.2. I guess according to third-grade math, he was not obligated to round up. But since the Latino population was increasing more than 4% by year, by the time the maps were in place in 2012, it would be 50%. I call that a $12 million answer because that's what it costs taxpayers of Kern County. The lawsuit that challenged the redistricting prevailed because it was based on laws in place, and the selected map violated California's Constitution, another Latino-protected district that was created, and the taxpayers lost $12 million worth of services during physical challenging times. The money could have gone towards upgrading the technology at our libraries, sidewalks, reducing garbage collection costs, or minimally filing some potholes. The Bakersfield City Council is set to approve their newly redistricted map soon, but I fear that they may be falling into the same slippery, expensive hole.
Ms. De La Rosa, your time is up, please. Bring your comments to her close.
Before I end, I would like to make a note that here in the public, we have tonight members that need translation, and there's no translation to be found. So if that could be a little bit more clear for our members to be able to participate fully in the redistricting process, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, and then also just notify the next one after.
Eliana Honeycutt, and then followed by Lori Pisante.
Thank you. And just a reminder, please be seated so that we can have all of our aisles in the back safe for egress. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Eliana Honeycutt, and I live in east Bakersfield. And today, I wanted just to remind the council about how Ward 3 specifically is a textbook example of incumbent protection gerrymandering, specifically because I want to implore the council to adopt the Unity Map because it was created and is supported by the community. And currently, our maps reflect decade-old data. And not only that, but Ward 3 in particular, on these current and proposed maps that you guys have, there's a 112-foot strip of land that connects northwest Bakersfield and Norris and Fruitvale to east Bakersfield. Now, something to remind about this part is that no one lives in this area, and it's mostly a street and dirt. And so this 112-foot ismus is a blatant, and the sole purpose is to specifically benefit the incumbent in that district, Ward 3, Ken Weir, by disenfranchising the communities of color sandwiched between Fruitvale and City in the Hills. Furthermore, this is made more obvious by the extensive use of zero-population areas that allow the larger populations to be connected. One important thing to note here is that there's no community of interest that explains this configuration at all. Furthermore, population hotspot cluster analysis shows that areas of low population concentrations, and so these clusters of unpopulated oil fields are in Kern River riparian and in the Fruitvale oil field. Another thing to note is that non-Latino white population is concentrated in the Norris-Fruitvale West portion of population center of Ward 3, and east Bakersfield Latino population is disenfranchised by the greater voting strength of the non-Latino white population in the far west portion of Ward 3. Now, since Ward 3 is a textbook example of incumbent protection gerrymandering, I would like to once again implore that this board adhere to the best practices formalized under the California Fair Maps Act and the Voting Rights District. And furthermore, it would be great if we could save the taxpayers' money in potential litigation, which we know is part of the reason why we're all here today. Thank you so much. Have a good one.
Thank you, Ms. Honeycutt. Next speaker, please, and then just announce the following, please.
Mayor Go, if I may actually, pardon the interruption, but for just a point of order, this hearing was not originally scheduled in our regular schedule for redistricting, and so we were not able to have translation services provided by a third party for this meeting. If there are individuals that wish to testify in Spanish language, we have staff that can translate their testimony on their behalf. And also, if there are a number of individuals who would like translation of the proceedings, we could provide that, we could provide that translation if we're able to have individuals sit or locate themselves at a location in chambers, we could provide that translation for them. So if there are any individuals wishing to have translation services, we can accommodate that.
Yeah. Would you ask them to raise their hands, please? Thank you. I think it'd be easiest just in that back corner if staff, if you could just rearrange yourself and people gather in that back corner for translation. The back, the back two rows, I think. We might need three rows. Let's see how many people. Staff, can you look around and just accommodate the situation, please, those of you who are sitting over here? sitting over here?
My name is Lori Pisante, and I am the Director of Civic Engagement Programming for the Dolores Huerta Foundation. You have now heard the statement of Linda Fidler from her experiences back in 2011 in the Kern County Board of Supervisors. The city of Bakersfield currently has a higher percentage of Latinos than Kern County had back then. You are in exactly the same position that you were in back then. And it is the case that Mr. Weir, who presides over the same district that my colleague identified as a textbook incumbent protection gerrymander, Chair of the Republican Party of Kern County, declared to everybody at the last hearing that it didn't matter that Maps 2 and 2A were illegal with deviations upwards around 19%. As soon as he had a chance to vote for that map, or some variation of it, he was going to move to do that. So I ask every person in the city of Bakersfield who is a registered voter to watch what happens at this hearing next, and note very carefully who supports the illegal map that Mr. Weir suggested he was going to move to adopt. Secondly, the California Fair Maps Act prohibits partisan advantage maps. I ask officially on the record if the city manager can make this happen. I ask for all maps submitted by Kathy Abernathy. By the way, that is exactly what everybody's calling that map that Mr. Weir has suggested we should move to adopt even before it was actually deemed to be legal. I want that analyzed for partisan advantage. I am asking for that to be done. Because if it is, it violates the Fair Maps Act, and this council should not adopt it or any variant of it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pisante. Next speaker, please, and announce the following one. And are we being accommodated in that corner with our Spanish speakers? Thank you.
Camila Chavez. Following Camila, it's Ricardo Del Hoyo.
Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Camila Chavez, and I'm the Executive Director of the Dolores Huerta Foundation. Our main office is located in downtown Bakersfield, and as you may know, we are investing over $20 million to construct the Dolores Huerta Peace and Justice Cultural Center at 21st and 8 Streets. We also have Vecinos Unidos, Neighbors United, member chapters in Bakersfield and Greenfield. We are committed to empowering community members to participate in the redistricting process. We've worked with over 5,000 people in the Equitable Maps Coalition throughout the Central Valley and the state at all levels of government. Our goal is to always ensure equitable maps are adopted. Redistricting requires us to make tough choices, and the law clearly tells us which choices to make first and how. The Fair Maps Act requires this council to make sure that maps have equal population, Voting Rights Act districts, and that the districts be contiguous. Only after these requirements are met can you try to meet other criteria, like communities of interest, compactness, and easily identifiable lines. This means that while it would be good to keep Westchester and downtown together as a community of interest as much as possible, and as a leader of an organization based in downtown, I understand why many people feel strongly about this. Three VRA districts must be drawn. The right map for Bakersfield is a map that draws three VRA districts and protects constitutionally protected Black, Punjabi, API, and Latinx communities in those districts as much as possible. You now have multiple maps to accomplish this: the Equitable Maps Coalition proposal, the Jacara Unity Map, New Bakersfield Map, Draft Plan A2, and A3. We ask you to advance all of these maps, and all those in favor of my comments, please stand.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Next speaker, please, and announce the following one, too, please.
Ricardo Del Hoyo.
Good afternoon, mayor and fellow council. Ricardo Del Hoyo with United Domestic Workers. I'm also a resident of Ward 4. Councilman Bob Smith is my councilman. And I'm here to talk a little bit about redistricting and why we are in support of the Unity Map. I think about the need for diversity, you know? When I went to South High, you know, we were fortunate to have a principal like Lee Vasquez. And I think about the Kern High School Board and having representation with Mr. Vasquez as well. And I look at the Board of Supervisors, and I look at the council, and I don't really see that much diversity. And so, with redistricting, we're hoping that we can change some of that. We're in support of the Unity Map because it creates three districts that have the correct amount of what we call VRA districts with the amount of population that we should had 10 years ago. So as a representative of labor, you know, I represent close to 7,000 home care workers here in Kern County. Specifically in Bakersfield, we represent 2,645 members. These are folks that take care of our elderly. These are folks that take care of our disabled community. And we need more representation. We need diverse representation. And that's not to take away from the rest of the council and, you know, the people that are here today. It's just, it's a little different when you have somebody that looks like you representing you. And it, you know, it made me get involved. And so, you know, that's kind of the plea on behalf of the Unity Map. You know, the Central Labor Council, which represents a whole host of other labor unions, just last night endorsed the Unity Map. I'm not here on behalf of the Central Labor Council, but I am on behalf of one of the unions that was in support of the Unity Map. So we're here to hopefully get a good feedback from the council, and hopefully we can get a map that is responsive to the comments and to the community groups that have been coming to these meetings and have been attending workshops, have been attending a lot of meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Delarosa.
You know, we have meetings every other week around 6:30, and so thank you for your time, mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the next speaker and the following one, please.
Nayli Aguirre Santoyo, and after that, Cecilia Delgado.
Hola, mi nombre es Nayli Aguirre Santoyo.
Hello, my name is Nayli Aguirre Santoyo.
Yo vivo en la ciudad de Bakersfield.
I live in the city of Bakersfield.
Y apoyo el mapa unido.
And I approve, I support the Unity Map.
Porque representa todos los...
Because it represents all...
Los residentes de Bakersfield.
Of the residents of Bakersfield.
Justamente.
Justifiably so.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cecilia Delgado, followed by Augustina Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say that I wish that redistricting was as popular as the census. Unfortunately, that is not the case. I really wish we would have more people involved, but maybe within the next 10 years, we can make it more aware to everyone of this process. I truly support the Unity Map because it was created by a diverse coalition in Bakersfield, residents who use demographic data and their deep knowledge of Bakersfield communities to make sure our diversity truly is strengthened by the next 10 years. Please adopt the Unity Map. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado. Next speaker, please, and announce the following.
Augustina Rodriguez, followed by Miriam Trejo.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Miriam Trejo.
Good afternoon. My name is Miriam Trejo.
Yo vivo en la ciudad de Bakersfield, California.
I live in the city of Bakersfield.
Yo apoyo el mapa unidos porque refleja la diversidad.
I support the Unity Map because it reflects the diversity.
Y esta es una oportunidad que pasa cada 10 años.
And this is an opportunity that only comes every 10 years.
Y creo que principalmente están involucrados nuestros hijos.
And I believe that specifically our kids are involved.
Y para nosotros como padres, ellos es lo más importante para nosotros, su educación.
And to us as parents, their education is the most important thing.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trejo. Next speaker, please, and announce the following.
Yolanda Partida, followed by Cecilia Lopez.
Hola, muy buenas tardes.
Hello, good evening.
Mi nombre es Yolanda Partida.
My name is Yolanda Partida.
Vivo en Bakersfield.
I live in the city of Bakersfield.
Y apoyo el mapa unidos.
And I support the Unity Map.
Porque representa...
Because it represents...
...los residentes de Bakersfield.
The residents of Bakersfield.
Justamente.
Justifiably so.
Este es un proceso que pasa cada 10 años.
This is a process that happens every 10 years.
Por favor, escúchenos para el futuro de nuestros hijos.
Please listen to us in the name of the future of our children.
Hoy es un ejemplo, el por qué se necesita.
Today is an example of why we need...
...representación. Gracias.
Representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Partida. Next speaker, please, and announce the following.
Cecilia Lopez, followed by Dolores Huerta.
Ms. Lopez, I think, had to leave, and so, Ms. Huerta, you're next.
You know, we have heard a lot of talk about democracy. We have seen what's happening in Ukraine right now, where people are deprived of their constitutional rights to have a government. Now, we're talking about the census. And when we're talking about redistricting, we're really talking about representation. This is what this is all about, and so that all the citizens and residents of Bakersfield will have equal representation. I was part of the project in the lawsuit that was filed against the Kern County Board of Supervisors because Mayor Go was on the board at that time. And the county had to pay, as was stated earlier, millions of dollars to lose a lawsuit because they would not adopt a map that really represented, excuse me, that represented the people in the county. I spent many, many days in that courtroom when that lawsuit was being debated, and the county lost. They lost that lawsuit. We just want to say to all of you that you have a responsibility to make sure that the residents of the city of Bakersfield have fair representation. It's not that incumbents should choose who they want to vote, but it should be the citizens that decide who they want to vote for. So we're here to ask you to do the right thing, to act in the name of democracy and adopt the map that has been presented to you, the Equity Map. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
We have not received any additional speaker cards.
Thank you. And now, city manager, click. I will close the public hearing at this time, and now, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor and council. I wanted to just provide a few observations about the process and also some of the maps that are before us prior to council deliberation. I think it's important for the council to know that behind the scenes, we've spent many, many days and hours crunching the numbers, looking at multiple different map iterations, both those provided by the community, other maps that we've produced in-house. This is a stack of maps that we've looked at. We've taken this issue very seriously and spent a lot of time looking at how to solve this puzzle in a way that addresses all interests. Specifically, we've made our best efforts to balance the most important factors expressed by council. Those do happen to be consistent with the criteria in the Fair Maps Act, and to use the analogy used previously, the big rocks in the jar. Council has provided feedback related to easily and clear identifiable boundaries, longstanding communities of interest, as well as doing that in a way that creates wards that are as compact and contiguous as possible. And then staff did ask, or excuse me, council did ask staff to look at maps that would address minority voter populations. Through the process, it's been very clear some of the challenges that we face in mapping. Many of the county islands that exist in the middle of the city make it very challenging. I think if you look at the county pockets north of the river, even Belteris, it's hard to work around some of these and keep contiguity and address all of the interests that are involved. I would also suggest just some of the topography and geography of the city and where the city limits extend, and the river as a key example, as an easily identifiable boundary. It creates some challenges in what some of the options might be. And then lastly, maintaining those communities of interest. If we're looking at downtown as an example and locking in that community of interest, it changes what some of the other options are available to us. There hasn't been a particular map that we've been able to develop with our consultants that perfectly balances all interests. And I would say respectfully that we have yet to see a map from other public interest entities that addresses the minority-majority voting districts that doesn't pose some other challenges for other communities of interest. And some of those maps have challenges with easily identifiable boundaries, compactness, contiguity. I'm only pointing this out to say how challenging this puzzle is. We've appreciated the community feedback, really good input and considerations, but it's very evident that it's a challenging balancing act. So I just want to speak specifically to some of the maps that staff has worked on with our consultants in response to council direction last week. And again, it was, as we tried to work through some of the possibilities, it was very clear to me how difficult it is to deliver a map that includes everything that council asks for. So of note, keeping the downtown community of interest intact and the MLK Lakeview community of interest intact significantly limits some options for the downtown in particular. Where does Ward 3 go if we keep the downtown community of interest intact? Only where it has gone historically, and it starts to make sense why some of the boundaries are the way that they are. Also, our consultants were asked to create a map that creates three minority-voting population districts, but maintaining downtown, MLK Lakeview, and the conversation we had about the river as a north-south boundary. In the end, our consultants had to create two maps because it wasn't possible to keep the downtown intact and the river boundary and still get to that goal. The numbers just don't work, so they had to create two options. That's why you see A2 and A3. And while they were able to create those maps and create a third minority-majority district, that was only able to be accomplished with minority-majority populations of 50.3% and 50.6%. And I just point this out to demonstrate how challenging it is with our demographics to create three minority-majority districts. And it's only accomplished by having a trade-off with some of the other considerations that council offered up at our last meeting. Ultimately, I would just point out that all of the maps presented to council tonight are legal and in compliance with the... are legal and in compliance with the criteria established for redistricting, but they balance those competing factors in different ways. It's a balancing act. There's pros and cons to the different approaches, and council has to weigh those tough choices, as was pointed out. I also just want to point out that all of the maps presented make improvements from, I think, historic maps that reflect our growing community. All maps presented tonight have a lower deviation amongst the council wards than in 2010. The maps in 2010 had a 12.8% deviation, and the deviations in our proposed maps range from 4% to 9%. Also, just as food for thought, all of the maps have a higher minority-voting population than they did in 2010. That's just simply the demographics of the city of Bakersfield today. I will use Map 2B as an example because it's the only one that has two Voting Rights Act wards as opposed to the others presented tonight. And the percentage of the voting population for Latino and Asian voters has increased since 2010 significantly in all wards, all seven. There have been three wards that have seen a double-digit increase to the 15% range, and the remaining wards have seen between a 5% and a 9% increase in the Latino voting population. The lowest increase occurred in Ward 2, that had only a 5% increase from 35% to 40% Latino voting population. So, while we looked hard at the maps, there are some concentrations of Latino voters in the city, but one of the great things about Bakersfield is that we have notable minority communities spread throughout the city and all of our voting districts. So, I think if the city were proposing maps that went in the wrong direction, that reduced the number of minority-majority districts, I'd be more concerned. If we were proposing maps that reduced those populations of voters, I would be more concerned. But would reiterate to the council that all maps tonight are in that right direction. But I would recommend to council that there is a need to begin to, both out of respect for the time that we have in front of us and the council direction we've received, we need to start to narrow our focus to some key considerations. And I do see there being consensus about the downtown community of interest, about the river roughly as a Ward 4 and 5 boundary. I think there's a lot of consistency across the board on those. And would just, again, reiterate what Ms. Carrier outlined earlier. As council begins deliberation, we're at that point where it's time to begin to focus in on preferred options that allow us to move forward in the next few weeks on the timeline that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. And now, colleagues, put it up for comment. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I'll start. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone who came out today and to participate. It was really great to hear all the different voices, and I appreciate all of you for coming tonight. Thank you very much. And I hope to see you often at council meetings. After hearing the comments tonight and seeing these draft maps, it's clear to me that we can see a map with three VRAs, and we ought to pursue that, and that needs to be a priority, given the fact that we're doing a good job at keeping some of these communities of interest together. My preference is that we move forward with exploring the Unity Map. I'm wondering if folks from the Unity Coalition can comment for just a moment on their map. I wanted to ask about this little dip we have in Ward 3. It goes into downtown and kind of makes a bit of an awkward move that isn't obvious to community members. And so, I wondered if we could, we had leverage to redraw that particular section and still remain consistent with our other goals. Is there someone from?
Ms. Cor.
So, those, that area that where you see those two dips, on both sides, you'll see residential areas. And then, that square that we have created is partly the more commercialized areas. And so, we see that the demographics are quite different, which is why we split it off right there. So, we're taking into consideration the socioeconomic and then also whether it's residents or whether it's businesses.
So, if it's more -- I'm sorry, if it's more of a commercial district, we can change those lines without much deviation?
Yeah, we can certainly discuss, and you and I can meet as well, or whatever the process may be that we have due diligence. Whatever it could be, we can definitely explore readjusting to fit those needs.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Councilmember Gonzalez, anything else?
That's it for now, thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Well, tonight, there was a few things said, and I just want to encourage us, excuse me, as a citizenry of Bakersfield, to be looking to each other to unite and not allow division to come into our community. It's so important today in the climate that we're seeing across the country. I appreciate each and every one of you for being here tonight because it's important that we all participate in the process. I know each one of you are very passionate about how you feel about your maps, and each one of us here on the dais takes that very seriously. But I want to say that it was said tonight that the dais does not look like our community, that we do not represent the community by what we see, what you see on this dais, that there's not enough diversity. And I would say that we do have diversity on this dais. And I'm very appreciative of my colleagues in Wards 1 and Ward 2, and then, I am the other diversity, because I'm the only female here, that represents our city. It was also said that citizens should, by Dolores and Mrs. Huerta, thank you for being here, that citizens should decide who they want to vote for. Well, my ward actually is 52% Latino. And when I was elected a little over a year ago, I ran against two African-American males and one Latino male, and then, there was me. So, we had quite diversity in my election, in my race, four of us running against. And I was the one, even though the color of my skin does not share the percentage of Latinos in my ward, I was still elected, I believe, because we share the same value system for those that elected me. So, when we continue to look at just the color of skin for our city, instead of what are our shared values and who is the one that's going to represent those values the way I want them represented, if we look at it from that perspective, I think we, as the citizens of Bakersfield, can be more united, can come together, and start solving issues as a group of people instead of as divided groups of people. That's what my vision is for Bakersfield. That's what I think most citizens feel. And I just felt like tonight that we have to start having this kind of conversation with each other because the color of our skin and our ethnicity does not, should not divide us. We can come together with the same core values, and I appreciate that. So, thank you tonight for coming. I really appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Ms. Huerta? Ms. Huerta, this isn't the appropriate time now to speak. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Freeman.
I have just a couple of comments. The first was that -- Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The first with respect to the various maps, and I'm addressing my ward right now because that's certainly one of my major concerns, is we had a lot of discussion in our last meeting about the clear historic community of interest that are just undebatable between the north and south of the river. City manager just went over that again. They have different park districts, school districts, everything. Councilman Smith reiterated that. And I think there's only one map that respected that. So, I was a little disappointed that anything but Map 2B respected all that discussion and all what's pretty well-established. It doesn't make any difference on the percentages of ethnic, one way or the other. Not enough for anybody to care. But those are clear, it's a good geographic boundary, it was historical boundary, it's a cultural boundary, a park district boundary. So, I like to be because of that one item. There are a few other minor adjustments in some of the other maps to my ward that not all that significant. But my only other comment is, I was bothered that, with exception of one map, the other map completely eliminated Ward 6 from all future growth forever. You talk about disenfranchising a group of people. To take one ward and pick it out of the city and say, "You can never have any more growth. You will never have the benefits, the economic benefits of the growth." Maybe that was overlooked, but this would be something that, that's just wrong. Right now, the existing maps in Ward 2B spreads the growth very equally across the southern part of the city, and all the growth is equally happening across the southern. From Ward 1, because the growth has certainly passed to the east side of the freeway down Panama Lane, we have all of the affordable housing, and it's coming all the way across, all the way out, down to Taft Highway, out in my ward. It spreads very equally, if you go out there, you can see it. And all the same ethnic groups are there, very reflective of what Bakersfield is today. So, we have, you know, we have the Sikh community, the Asian community, we have the black, we have the very, very heavily Latino in all the new homes, and it's great. These people, it's our community, it reflects who we are, and it's equally spread across the whole southern part of our city between four different wards, and it's a wonderful thing. And to pick out one ward and to say, "You are eliminated from that growth forever," I think is a disservice to that ward, certainly, but to the people of Bakersfield. Now, maybe that was just an oversight by whoever was drawing the map. I would hope in future iterations of these other community maps, because we'll be looking at more iterations here, I hope that gets corrected because no one should ever do that to a ward, I don't care which ward it is, but to disenfranchise them that badly forever is just something a community shouldn't do. So, in fact, it doesn't affect my ward as much, but Ward 6 growth is gone forever. I just think that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And really quickly, thank you to everybody who's here in the room and continues to come back, get engaged in this process, submit new maps, work with staff and council to make those edits. It is tireless work, and I so appreciate every single one of you who have taken the time to do that, and all those who came to speak out here. We appreciate you. But with great respect, Councilmember Freeman, and I forget which piece of legal text, and it's my hope that we can get some help, but I believe that either the Fair Maps Act or the Voting Rights Act specifically specifically prevent us from taking into consideration future growth. I can't remember, Christian?
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I believe I hear a question there. Our mapping consultants can speak to that question.
Please.
And again, to introduce, Sofia Garcia from Redistricting Partners has been tirelessly working to get all these maps prepared for us. Sofia.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sofia Garcia. I'm the GIS and Outreach Director with Redistricting Partners, the consultant that is working behind the scenes with you and staff. We've had countless conversations. We've been listening to all of the meetings and making those amendments. And I wanted to address and just clarify two of the things that Councilmember Freeman spoke about. One is the issue of the river. And so, we did, and we spoke with Christian and Brianna extensively on your amendments for the last meeting of having three VRA districts, looking to keep downtown whole, looking to keep the MLK area whole, and then, also to address the issue of the north and the south of the river. With the construction of having three VRA districts, we were unable to accommodate the rest of those asks and amendments. So, with having those three VRA districts and having them be so tight, with two at that, a little bit over that 50%, and another district that is over that percentage, and we do have data tables that came with the Atlas packets that this staff has received, so those should be online. You'll have a more extensive data table. We will be able to look at each of those wards specifically. So, having that as a stone, we were unable to respect that boundary of the river. When we spoke with Christian, I brought that up. I said, "This may not be possible." So, we looked at Allen Road being a boundary and also looking at the West Side Parkway being a boundary, so that we couldn't respect the river, but we looked to try to keep either those major roads or those freeways when we were looking at that. So, I really wanted to address that because I want to let you know that we heard you, and we did our best, but with the three VRA, we were unable to have that boundary be accommodated.
Okay, well, thank you. That's a good clarification.
And then, I also wanted to address your ask about future growth. And Councilmember Arias, you are correct. It's not because of, so it's because we have to use the 2020 Census Decennial Census File, so the file that we all filled out, hopefully, on April 1 of 2020. I know a lot of folks in this room, on either side, were a part of that. Bakersfield and Kern County had a really wonderful census outreach plan. But, so, when we do redistricting, we have to use the data that comes from that file. So, we're bound by law to use whoever filled out that census data, so the total count of people. We are unable in any redistricting to account for future growth. So, whether there is a house that we see on the other side of the street that is going to be there in two years, in nine years, we're unable to utilize that as a part of our redistricting process until the next decennial census.
Okay, one question.
Yes.
So, are the maps that were presented tonight, do all, I think we have five of them, do all of them meet your criteria?
So, we, and I spoke with staff as well. So, we do have, I believe, staff talked about those traditional redistricting criteria in the existing wards and in your draft Plan 2B. We did bring up the concern of having that portion of Ward 3 about that it's potentially not functionally contiguous, and so, we could have staff talk about that more or have your council come on and address that. So, that, other than that, they do all follow those criteria, as was mentioned. So, the, it's a, and I don't know if we have that up and available, but when we're looking at the construction of plans, we have to follow the Fair Maps Act, those best criteria. And they're in a ranked criteria order. So, you have the first criteria of looking at creating wards, and I'm sorry, I'm going between wards and districts. I know that we're in wards. I live just outside of the city, so I'm not in a ward. But you have to look at the first criteria of creating districts of relatively equal size. So, that is the criteria that a lot of people are talking about, those numbers. So, that's looking at that total plan deviation. So, it's a criteria. And so, compactness and contiguity are a little bit below the equal population and following communities of interest.
With your mask and my bad hearing, it's, I have trouble. I really do have trouble following everything. But my question that, I think you said there may be a tweak here and there on the five maps to make them all legal, is that what you said?
Yes.
And so, I guess it's mine, then I guess mine goes back to simply an observation that only one map allows these districts to grow fairly, and my, fairly, I'd say, economically and in sort of equal numbers and percentages. And so, I guess, I guess my comment is simply an observation then.
Right, yes. And that is something that we hear throughout the board in a lot of jurisdictions. But unfortunately, for the redistricting process, we are bound to use the data that we have and cannot look at future growth. Yeah, we can, you guys can talk about that in 2030 or 2031, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Arias, you have the floor, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could keep you out there and ask you a couple more questions. So-- So if I heard you correctly, the way that public submission 2B, the map, the way that you see it with the Ward 3 extending up into northwest Bakersfield, you would see that there are, could potentially be some challenges to that and being consistent with the Fair Maps Act. Is that correct?
So I can have Christian speak to this too, because Paul, our principal consultant, has had email correspondence with him about that specific area. And so from our consultant perspective, we have raised that, but if Christian wants to, we can address that.
So before we have staff chime in, there has been correspondence between Redistricting Partners and city staff that there are some questions about that. Is that correct?
Yes, about the functional contiguity of that. And so I know we're throwing around some words that only come up once a decade, and we understand this process is confusing on multiple levels. So when we talk about contiguity, it means that you are geographically having wards that geographically touch one another. They can't hop or jump over an area. They all have to be touching one another geographically. We have contiguity in appearance and functionally. So does it look like a ward that is together, or functionally does it make sense to move between a district or another district? We also have to look at the compactness, and compactness is again another term that comes up once a decade, that can mean something different when we're out of a redistricting cycle or when we're in it. And for compactness, in California, we have a rather elegant definition now under the Fair Maps Act, which is to not bypass nearby population for faraway population. And so we do, we did have some concerns specifically under those two areas for the Fair Maps Act, for that ward. But again, I think that would have to be ultimately rely on your council to give you specific direction. But as your consultant and people who look at these laws and talk with jurisdictions across the California, we did raise it as a possible thing for concern, and so that's why you have other iterations of the plans that don't look at that. And again, just as a reminder, the plan that has this construction is your draft Plan A, which takes your, the base of that is your existing lines. And for the other plans that you have, we used other communities of interest and other criteria for those plans.
And then pivoting, there's been a lot of discussion from community members and folks who've spoken tonight and submitted maps about this idea of creating voting rights districts. And it seems to me like there is a bit of interpretation that's necessary in order to understand clearly how it applies to the city of Bakersfield with its current CEPAP and its current population. So I'm curious to know kind of, how do you, how does Redistricting Partners interpret that? Because I would like to know where we are. Is it at 2, is it at 3, is it at 4? We would like to get some clarity on that, certainly.
So we, as your consultant, are not at liberty to tell you that you have to choose a specific number of VRA districts. That would be, your counsel would have to, your legal counsel would have to come in and address that. We're simply here to give you the option, so it is ultimately up to you, the council, to make that policy decision. We're at the point right now in the draft map hearing and the redistricting process where we are listening to the community, but we are at the point where our amendments to plans will have to come from you, the council, and to give us direction to modify the plan. Another piece of the redistricting process, and I know I'm throwing a lot of information out here to you, is that we are not allowed to draw districts specifically based on race unless your legal counsel directs us to do so. And also, when we see any districts or plans that have additional VRA districts, as was presented to you throughout this process, a little red flag is kind of raised for us and our company. So then we look at, okay, you have the option, you have the opportunity to do so, then we go in and our internal software and then give you another option, which we have done, where you're two additional plans. So we, again, we're not at liberty to direct you to do anything. That direction would have to come from your council, but just hearing from public feedback, again, this is a policy decision that you all have to make as a council.
I appreciate that so much, and thank you for entertaining my questions.
Of course. No, yeah, I love them, so we're here. But again, we're working with staff and we've all had communications with what you're doing.
And I think the fact that, you know, through several submissions, whether that be through the Unity Map or submission or Draft Plan A3, I think it's been proven that it can be done, at least as closely as possible with some exceptions. And I'm curious to know, Councilmember Gonzalez's take on some of the challenges with keeping Westchester intact with the rest of downtown. But I think we have an opportunity to do two things tonight. One is to really, you know, make sure that we're being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And I think that includes ensuring that we are moving forward on maps that are, you know, in alignment and compliance with the Fair Maps Act, also the Voting Rights Act, are empowering our African-American and Punjabi communities, and then also making sure that deviation is as low as possible while also keeping it consistent with communities of interest. But more importantly, I think we have an opportunity to create a map that we can take pride in. We can take pride in a map that truly represents what our community looks like, whether you're a Punjabi, you know, youth who lives, you know, just down the street from Councilmember Parlier, or, you know, a young Latino who lives on the east side like myself, or an African-American who grew up in the MLK community, or you're a Caucasian brother and sister who grew up in Oildale and eventually moved to the city and would like an opportunity to represent the city that you grew up in. I think all of that is important, and more than, you know, trying to find what is legally justifiable, we should do the right thing and take pride in this map. And more important than, I think, any of us on this dais, we have this map and it's going to last for 10 years. 10 years, and I don't know that very many of us will continue to serve on this council. And I take this opportunity very seriously. And so tonight, I would like to make a motion that we move forward on entertaining the Jakara Movement Map, that's Public Submission 5, as well as Draft Plan A3. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. City Manager Clegg, would you like to offer some comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to reflect on that question and share some additional perspective that our consultants reflected, that we had discussed this quite a bit. As I stated earlier, I am confident that all maps that we have there before council tonight are legal and compliant. We looked hard at the questions of contiguity and compactness for all of the maps. And again, there's trade-offs that are considered. While if you look on a map, the Ward 3 question that came up, it does look somewhat interesting on a map because there's that big gap in the middle, but that's a county pocket. And we addressed the question of contiguity specifically. That section of Ward 3 includes Coffee Road, that has a road and a sidewalk, and so it does meet the legal definition of a contiguous ward. Is it ideal in compactness? I think we could recognize that it is not, but given, again, that we have these county pocket areas, it's challenging to create a different level of contiguity, particularly when we're keeping the downtown community of interest intact. As I noted earlier, that's really where Ward 3 can continue to show that population. And if there weren't those county pockets there, it would be far more compact, both in the northeast and in the north. But I'll turn it to our legal counsel to reflect also that we've gotten outside legal opinion on the question of contiguity and compactness.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Clegg. City Attorney.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, our office did consult with outside council, and they confirmed that Ward 3 is, does meet the criteria of being compact and being geographically, geographically compact and contiguous. So it meets both criteria.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's a lot of passion in this room tonight, and I can understand that. I can appreciate that. Everybody's trying to look and get the best decision they can make. And I guarantee you, everybody that's sitting on the dais up here wants that same thing. We've gone through the hearings now. We've been through this. We've got five different maps before us right now. And now it's up for us to decide which ones we want to move forward. And I know that not all of you are going to be happy when we move a map forward, because it's not going to meet your criteria. That's unfortunate, but I think we found through this process that it is unlikely that we could meet all those criteria and still have a map that's intact. I've been in Ward 3 since I've been on the council. It's not really changed a whole lot since I've been on the council. It grew a little bit, I think, but it's not really changed. And this is my 15th year on the council. So we need to move forward with it. We need to make some, at least, initial decision about what we are going to do with the map for the next 10 years. I believe Ward 2B, our Map 2B, is the best. And there are a number of reasons for that, but I'm just telling you, I think it's the In saying that, I want to make a motion to send Map 2B, and only Map 2B, with the revision to move the area bounded by Ash Road, Stockdale Highway, Newstein Road, and Ming Avenue from Ward 5 into Ward 6 to the full council for a final vote on March 16. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be clear that that motion, you know, goes, flies in the face of an opportunity to create three VRAs that is consistent with federal legislation that has been enforced in so many other communities throughout our country. And we have an opportunity to do the right thing, and that motion does not, it's not consistent. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I, let me ask staff, I thought we still had some time to make some adjustments. Councilmember Smith, we have some time, again, to meet our March 16 timeframe. We need to have proposed maps published by March 9. So there's a very narrow window, but there's still some window.
So the maps would have to be published and then voted on after that.
Correct.
So we're not, we're not, we don't have to vote on the maps tonight. We can give direction, multiple maps, and come back and vote at a later date.
So Councilmember Smith, we need direction tonight on what specific maps to bring on the 16th, but there's, again, a very narrow window to try and create a map for the 16th that's reflective of some feedback tonight, but it needs to be fairly specific. If it's very open-ended, we're hard-pressed to craft a map that would be specific enough to be, you know, responsive by the 16th.
Right. Well, you know, there's two issues that I've heard that I thought could be addressed, was the Ward 3 coming down into District 2 is called on the Unity Map, coming down into, or, yeah, D3 coming in, that square that comes down, that maybe that could be straightened up, and maybe, you know, we could work a little more with the river further out. Comment was made, so, I mean, I would like to continue to work on those personally is kind of where I stand.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for the City Attorney. So these maps were republished last night. Is there a public viewing requirement?
The only requirement for a public viewing is when it's going to go to first reading. So we have to post them seven days prior to the first reading. So we could, we technically received maps this afternoon that were presented to you today.
But if we make a motion and adopt a motion to advance one map that's already prescribed, isn't that de facto the preferred map?
In essence, you're moving it forward, and that will be the map that goes to first reading. So yes.
Do we have any concerns about that strategy from a legal perspective?
They are all legally defensible. We've all had an opportunity to, our offices had an opportunity to review them.
I'm asking about the process.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you, we are, we are moving forward by what the law allows us to do. So, yes, we've had our public hearings. We had an opportunity to allow the public to speak, and so this is a, this is the moment where you decide which of the maps, map or maps, moves forward to first reading.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I don't see any other requests to speak. So we've had two motions, and by the way that we proceed, we'll take the second one first. Madam Clerk, would you, I'm sorry, Madam City Attorney, would you just state that, please?
Thanks.
Oh, and Councilmember Smith has a question or a comment.
I'm sorry. Could I, could I just ask Vice Mayor if he would leave an opening to adjust that map with those two ideas? I would ask him to amend that motion if he would. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but do we even have time to do that?
Vice Mayor, I would suggest that there is time if, again, the feedback is very specific about the recommendations to adjust one of the maps in front of us.
Maybe Councilmember Smith could just tell me about what we're doing here.
I'm sorry. The adjustments I was asking for was on the Unity Map, not on the map you moved, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
And that's submission number 5.
Correct.
Correct.
All right. So Councilmember Gonzalez now has a request to speak.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make a motion tonight that we advance Maps 2B and Public Submission 5. 2B and Public Submission 5. With, with the adjustments to Public Submission 5.
And 2B.
And 2B.
That's the last motion.
If I may, then, the adjustments to Map 5, we would appreciate some clarity. What I heard was, looking at the area between Wards 4 and 5 along the river, perhaps if I could suggest that, what I heard you saying, Councilmember Smith, was to make some adjustments that may be a little bit consistent with what the boundaries of 2B between 4 and 5 look like to a degree, or just work on that boundary along the river.
The two issues that we talked about was the boundary between 4 and 5 and the river, number one. And the second one was the one that Councilman Gonzalez had brought up, where the square comes down into the downtown area between 2 and 3.
Correct. And so my question is, would we, would you have the square move up? Would you have?
I would have, I would have the square move up. Would make sense to me, yes. That area seems to be more downtown. But it's Councilman Gonzalez's.
No, that's exactly what I was getting at. The square needs to move up.
Just the square?
For Ward 2, yeah. For Ward 2, yeah.
Councilmember Gonzalez, anything further?
That's it. That's my motion.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Considering if that adjustment is made and Ward 3 moves up and Ward 2 takes up that chunk, that's more than likely going to create a need for a decrease in population potentially for Ward 2. And I think it would be appropriate to make Ward 1 consistent with Highway 58, if that is a necessity. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Madam City Attorney, we have three motions before us on the floor, and I know we have a lot of participants here tonight who are unfamiliar with our process. So would you please just go through and clearly explain how it works with the motions first, and then we'll take the motions?
Yes, yes. Chair, there you go. So the last motion goes first, which is Councilmember Gonzalez's motion to move forward with map 2B as a buoy and submission map number 5 with the two adjustments, one being the boundary between Ward 4 and 5 along the river, and that the square that comes down in Ward 3 move up to Ward 2. And the adjustments in 5 are stated.
So, Madam City Attorney, just for our audience, explain if a motion fails, what happens? So let's do the first one and explain how that would work, because I know that can be very confusing.
If that last motion that I just explained fails, we move to the second motion that was made, which was Vice Mayor Weir's motion to move forward with map 2B with no changes. He had changes on that? Oh, I'm sorry. He did have adjusted changes. And the adjusted changes included specific streets. Do you have them? Ash, Stockdale Highway, Ming Avenue, and Newstein Road.
Okay.
If that motion fails, then we move to the very first motion that was made by Councilmember Arias, and that was for map submission number 5 and for submission map A3.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Now would you announce the motion that we're going to vote on now, please?
So the motion is for, to move forward with map 2B as a buoy and subdivision map 5, sorry, submission number 5. The adjustments by the boundaries between 4, Ward 4 and 5, including the river, and moving the square that comes down in Ward 3 to Ward 2.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Colleagues, you have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Oh, yes. It includes the adjustments on 5. I'm sorry. Is anybody having trouble voting?
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir, Councilmember Freeman, and Councilmember Gray voting no.
Thank you. Did you have further comment?
So the other motions just die.
Correct. Thank you. And that concludes this portion. Let's take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back for our next item. Thank you all for your patience.